Call this meeting ordered. First, please call the room.
Mr. Chairman?
Here.
Mr. Douglas?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Spade?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Chairman Lewis?
Here. We always start our meetings with a prayer. Let's just. You want to do it this morning or you can really just come back?
I would be honored, thank you. Heavenly Father, thank you for gathering us here this morning as free people to discuss the business of Lapeer County. And if we do, we are so thankful and so mindful of that blessing of freedom. And that freedom did not come free for all the wisdom of our forefathers that gave such thought into our constitution, all of those throughout history that have helped defend our freedoms, and all those right now in armed forces who are away from their families, scattered throughout the world defending freedom for this nation. We ask for a special blessing of safety upon them to bring them to be soon victorious and safe to your county. We also thank you for all the blessings we have here in Lapeer County. We thank you for our staff. We ask for a blessing upon them and keep them safe, all those especially that serve for us and put themselves in harm's way. We also know within our midst our fellow citizens that are suffering, and in the way that we can help them, Lord, please help us to extend that help began. As we prepare to conduct the business this morning in the county, please give us wisdom. Help us be mindful of civility and respect for each other, and we ask all of us in your holy name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of you to our meeting this morning. If you are here to talk in public time concerning a second amendment issue, please sign in over there. So you can get your name on the line down at the afternoon screen. You can just go over to the left, that's where you want to actually over here to sign up. So here in that, we'll start the meeting with the first thing this call is on. Is the Department had updates? Any Department head or my good officials like to give us an update this morning? No Department head or up? Like to give an update this morning? Here in the same, I want to close if any Department had updates. I will open the first public time. Public times are on this one. We allow, allow three minutes this morning. Public time, you address the chair. There'll be no conversation with any other county board. We don't allow that very publicly, so there'll be no discussion back and forth. We won't have discussion back and forth among the commissioners either because it's your time to talk to the county and express your opinion. So before we do that, I'm going to have to call for a, you know, a couple of public hearings. We have a public hearing with Lapeer Development Corporation, I-69 Regional Development Fund. We have a public hearing final report on completion of Popovich Properties CDBG project and request for a grant of 1 million and complete closeout documentation to schedule the closeout. Anybody here to speak at this public hearing?
This morning, my comments about the second amendment resolution that will be discussed this morning.
I'm discussing a public hearing right now for Lapeer Development Corporation. We also have one, and we have to do it at a certain time. As soon as that one's finished, then we allow everybody else to come up there. No, that, no problem. Also have a buildings and grounds parts department public hearings regarding grant applications to Michigan DNR trust fund. You probably have trail development, trail improvements. Do they get this up first in public? Yes, for the first public hearing. So we're going to open the public hearing?
For, for the public?
For Lapeer Development.
Good morning, Councilman. I'm Mr. Wolfman. My name is Quentin Bishop and I would like to directly with Lapeer Development Corporation. We're here for the public hearing for the closeout public hearing for a CDBG project for Popovich Properties. So Popovich Properties as a whole is a loan that was made through the I-69 Regional Development Fund. They're currently current on their loan, and in order for us to close out that loan under the state so we can take control of those funds, collect interest on it, and then reloan it back into the community through the revolving loan fund, I'm here to give an update on that status. Mr. Popovich and the properties is current in their loan. They currently have a balance of 116,000 left to pay. They're making monthly installments on time, and things are moving forward accordingly. So asking that, are there any questions as related to the CDBG request?
When you basically are up. Basically, a public hearing that's required under the laws.
While I'm up, would this be the appropriate time to talk about the grand amendment, or should I wait for another portion of that on the agenda?
Grand amendment's on, also on, it's for a public hearing.
It is related to the public hearing on completion of Popovich Properties.
It's full of light, yes, we can talk again.
That'd be all right? I appreciate that. I'm requesting a grand amendment so we can extend the grant deadline. Originally, Popovich Properties was required to have this all taken care of by November 30th. After I dug into the paperwork and realized that certain documents were missing, I jumped right out and contacted the state to make sure that we were in compliance. We are in compliance, but to make sure and to ensure that we meet the deadline, I'm asking for a grant amendment extension of the end of February, last day of February. The paperwork was provided, it is in your packet. What I would need would be the chairman's signature approving that amendment, so then I can have the final closeout. What that means is everything that has been completed on behalf of Popovich Properties has been completed. That includes the job creation report summary, that also includes all the environmental that needed to take place, and as I mentioned before, he is current with his loan, and so we're just humming along, and this is just a, technically a formality so we can move this forward and get the funds back until Lapeer County.
We need to close the public hearing first.
We've been in a public hearing. Yes. We're, we're in public hearing, don't we need to motion to close it? We do to close the public hearing.
There's no audience comment?
All in favor, say aye. All say aye. Big portion of this for real.
Move the extension. Second.
It's moved to second. A motion in support, all clear to the motions, we'll say aye. All say aye. Thank you. One more public hearing, so I'm going to open a public hearing regarding grant applications to Michigan DNR trust fund for Lapeer Development. Are you here to?
Very bravely, this is an application for through the Michigan National Trust Fund, same grant application applied for two years, which you approve, and approved by the local governments in fact of Dryden, in the way downtown Lake City, which is a path capable to a lot of land.
This is a public hearing, so if anybody in the audience wants to speak at a public hearing.
I would like to speak here. Just, I'd like to speak in support of that proposition. My name is Maurice Free, since I'm here on another matter, but I wanted to give you a little history. We were Route One in West Bloomfield. I worked on that in 1988, 2000. We developed a trail, envision of rails to trails corridor and path development. Most recently, I was aware when I relocated back to Michigan that a gentleman by the mission, you know, Mr. Howell, not related to area, is in charge of that trip rails to trails, and asked me for a number of years now, seven years since I did that, to expand that grant proposal so that it would interconnect so that the state of Michigan could envision a completed rails to trails and railway recreational network. Lapeer County is a prime opportunity for recreation, and this trail system coming from Oxford all the way through actually interconnects to Paint Creek, actually, if you follow the rails to trails corner and hold the county's plans along the M-24 corridor, all the way through Oxford, up through, initially it's going through Lum now, and then it's going to come back and connect to the southern trail. Tremendous opportunity for this county to complete this trail, and one of the best ways to do it is to grant right of approval, and I totally support this proposition, so I just wanted to make that comment to you. I was, I came back, I went to see the southern portion of our trail when I was doing an event in Tensington Meadow Park. It went from West Bloomfield along the Pontiac Trail Corridor, 70 miles of trail that connected all the way through Isle Lake Recreation and the DNR. I was trying to get Gary Howell's office to support this thing, and Kevin Daly's office to support this thing, and I'm still working behind the scenes on that. I ask you guys, please grant this petition. All right, thank you.
Hello, good morning, Mr. Chairman, numbers. I'm quite familiar actually with the trail system the gentleman just spoke of. I walked it all the time right up until I moved here. I grew up right against Bloomfield, as they've said before. That's a marvelous trail system, by the way. But concerning Lapeer County, though, I wanted to encourage you to support this grant because as the gentleman said, tremendous recreation opportunities, beautiful trail. I've walked the Dryden section, the Emily City section, the Emily Township section. I really enjoy it, and anything we can do to improve it and maintain it would be great, any additional funding, so I just wanted to encourage it, thank you.
Joe? Joe? This grant, it contains two trail between Dryden.
The proposed grant is to put a surface on the trail from Dryden Village to Emily City.
So still nothing north of that was.
Correct.
People that don't understand what we're talking about, a few years ago, there was an issue north of Emily City. And the issue was, we had a railroad, we had people in the county who actually signed leases from that railroad, and that property was supposed to be worth back, so landowners, so we've never afforded a trail going market. And for those that live up in North Branch, lives in that particular property, you should know that a few years ago, the reason this trail only goes to, basically, another gated township, part of, goes up basically to Lum, not much farther, is because an individual bought right of the railroad for all that property, turned that property back over to the landowners, to the farmers and everything else along the coast.
I, I remember that history.
Remember that?
Yeah.
And that Culver bought all that property?
And that's why.
Back to the farmers and stuff along that area.
If I could intercede just a little bit, that's why I think Kevin Daly's office is in support, because he knew there was a land dispute, and therefore, because there was a dispute, he couldn't endorse the thing until there was a replication. Now, if, if the county somehow figures away, by the in-between section, you would have a complete corridor, and I know that farmers were reluctant to do it because they feel hunting and so forth and an intrusion on their property. But we faced this issue in West Bloomfield and all the way through, we get an ill local government agencies, and what happens is it becomes self-patrolling. Things have changed in the last 30 or 40 years, so principally, one of the issues we have here is on your, is a second amendment issue, protection and so forth. But we felt, when we initiated this program, that it was self-patrolling and was in the best interests of the community to interconnect not only the recreational amenities, but the communities themselves by a different source of transportation. So, but I do know the dispute, so, thank you.
You know very well, that's my district.
Yeah.
Thank you. We need to, I guess we need to close that public time. Close public time, support. And move the grant.
I would move the grant.
So, all in favor? I oppose.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thanks for motion, we'll close public time. All in favor, say aye. Close that public time, we're going to vote on the grant. All in favor? Two quick questions.
On the resolution, at the very end, it says now be resolved, and it seems to apply the works being done by the DNR.
The grant is being given by the DNR.
Are you nervous about that word, the way it's written?
I don't believe so.
You're satisfied with that?
No, no. Because the DNR does apply, that's actually applying grant, so they are applying the grant to the Michigan Trust Fund, which is an entity set up to approve the grants.
Okay. And in terms of the money match?
Yes.
Hundred thousand?
Hundred thousand is what we're looking for. We believe we have 114,000 in commitments. You will address verifying for some other money grants, and that's under a general rule today, that's a match of grant.
So the, the foundation grants would make up that hundred thousand?
In fact, we have, I believe it's 70,000 in the bank.
Okay, from the friends?
From the friends group. We have to come up with more, which group, confidence, or their confidence will be able to do.
Make sure everybody understands it's a friend of the Palahana Trail, nothing to do with the county. Still want to get my.
Private 501(c)(3).
So what do you want to change?
He says like the.
Okay. I guess we have to vote still. All in favor, say aye. All say aye. That'll bring us down to oppose resolution and declare Lapeer County Second Amendment sanctuary county. Go into the first public time, recovery comment. Then we'll go into the resolution, and Harry will read the resolution after the first public session.
Again, I apologize for confusion. You spoke about the second amendment resolutions on your agenda. As a citizen, I support that resolution, and I'd like to see the county take it up. We have a right to bear arms in this country and the states, both in the U.S. Constitution and the state constitution, and there's been efforts in other states to severely curtail that recently in Virginia. This resolution came about to try and preempt that here in Michigan. Like, it's important that people have their second amendment rights for self-defense, and it's, it's more than just self-defense, there's other dangers in the world, China, Russia, the Middle East, and the reason in World War II that Japan didn't invade the U.S. is because they knew there was a gun behind every door, potentially. We, the citizens, sometimes are the first line of defense for this country, and not just against foreign enemies, but domestic. There was recently a shooting in a church, where an armed citizen was able to take out an intruder that intended to do harm, way faster than any police response could have done. So I think it's very important that citizens have this right and are able to keep it, and it's reaffirmed. So I would recommend that the county board approve this resolution, I would encourage it. Declaring this a second amendment sanctuary, it's a right guaranteed in our constitution. This is different than cities declaring themselves sanctuaries for illegal immigration. The difference is, people don't have a right from other countries, so they just come here and cross our border without going through the proper channels. We have federal laws for that. This is a, just a resolution that reaffirms a right in our constitution, state and federal. So I would encourage you to take up this resolution, I would encourage you to stand up for it, and I would like to see a vote on it today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just request that speakers come up here, they just say who they are and what township or city they're from?
I had him right.
Yeah, just for, for commissioners.
For his benefit, please.
William Hamilton, I live here in Lapeer Township.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Harden, living in Lapeer County, over in Young Road. A member of the Lapeer County Sports and Club, 12,450 strong, and this has been brought up and discussed out there, and we're in full support of Lapeer County becoming a second amendment sanctuary county. Make sure you're done.
Thank you for your time. Who else would like to address the board during the first public?
Seems like a nice day.
Maurice Free, Mayfield Township, also chairman of the Lapeer County Tea Party. I carry this little document here called the Constitution. I've seen some articles in the paper about people being alarmed, that think that something's going to happen as a result of this. My understanding is, I read this resolution, very straightforward, it's reaffirmation of our constitutional rights. We in the Tea Party were very concerned of what's going on in Virginia, what's going on in San Francisco, what's going on in certain other cities. I see the impeachment process going on as we talk, and what's happening here? We have three to four individuals who represent sanctuary cities trying to impeach the President of the United States. What's their problem? They don't violate, they violate the Constitution. This is not only reaffirmation of one single constitutional right, this, this resolution that you have before you, it's a resolution that you are referring to the Constitution of the United States and also reaffirming the Constitution of the state of Michigan. So with all that said, and I, I read your resolution, I support this commission, I hope you vote in favor of the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else would like to address the board during the first public?
Good morning, my name is Kevin Keel. My name is Nora. I am obviously a supporter of the second amendment. I am a leader of the security team at my church and understand the application of the second amendment. I appreciate the way this has been written. It lays out the authority by which you take up this resolution, that being concerned with our safety. It lays out the precedents by which this request is made, setting several Supreme Court cases. There has been some talk I've heard on social media about why are you taking this up now? This isn't an issue from Michigan. I, for one, just want to go on record as saying I appreciate the proactive approach to this, getting ahead of it before there's some negative turn at the state level, as we have seen in other states. So I do appreciate you taking this up, and I want to go on record as being for this amendment. Hope you vote in favor.
Who else would like to address the?
It is a beautiful day.
Chairman Roy, my name is Tim Drager. I'm actually representing Moms in Action, I'm from Genesee County. I was here at the request of Janet Jager Watts, who is a resident of Lapeer. She asked if I would come at least speak in opposition to this. I sent you a letter this morning, as well as to the sheriff. I think it's important to note, you know, we've talked about the Constitution, and I firmly believe in the Constitution as well. The challenge is, is that your executive branch, you make the laws. The sheriff is the branch that enforces law, but nobody in those two branches can decide constitutionality. The courts decide constitutionality. And by taking this amendment, the question comes in is, are you putting yourself in position of determining the constitutionality of laws that are passed by another executive branch, in this case, our state legislature? So I caution you to consider this. We support the second amendment, I personally support the second amendment as well. I'm a gun owner, but I also represent the fact that responsible laws help make certain that only appropriate people, like the people in this room, that are legally allowed to carry a gun, will carry a gun. And by saying that I'm a sanctuary, are you going to go against the laws and the Constitution of your own state? So I caution you in considering this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak to this board this morning? You have three minutes to do so.
My name's Tom Davis, I'm from Marathon, Alaska. I'm here supporting the second amendment sanctuary county. I'm very happy that you're being proactive about it. I don't want to be reactive. I have a short story. My doctor, who passed away, was from the Philippines. My doctor told me this, okay? You know, a lot of people don't believe that doctors view the second amendment as an important thing. But in the Philippines, they requested everybody turn in their guns for the betterment of the community. The Philippines went downhill very fast after that. I don't want to see that happen tomorrow, great. I appreciate your being proactive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this board during the first public?
Carol Brown, sorry, from Mayfield Township, and I'm also a leader of the Tea Party and exactly the committee member of the DOP here, and I just want to say that I must support this two A sanctuary county resolution, and I hope you guys will answer.
Thank you.
Dan Watts, 50-plus year resident of Lapeer County. If you guys would speak up a little bit, people in the back could hear what you're talking about.
No, we're not right now.
The sky is falling, the sky is falling. This is the story Chicken Little. When an acorn fell on her head, Chicken Little immediately thought the sky was falling, and she rushed to tell the king. Reminds me of the gun debate. When people today even begin to talk about reducing gun violence, of which there are 100 deaths and 200 injuries a day, gun owners immediately react saying, they want to take our guns away. Even our president has used this false inflammatory rhetoric. When lawmakers take action to improve public safety, the people sworn to protect our communities have an obligation to carry out the law, not to obstruct it. Passing the two A sanctuary county resolution says to our law enforcement, you don't have to obey the laws if they're there. 12 states and DC have passed red flag laws, multiple states have enacted laws closing the online and gun show background loophole, 95% of voters support background checks of some sort, 85% of voters nationwide support red flag laws. In states across the country, law enforcement groups have strongly urged lawmakers to work together to pass common sense gun laws. The Attorney General in Virginia recently stated that resolutions like this have no legal effect, even though they may wrongly suggest that local politicians and sheriffs have the power to decide for them. have the power to decide for themselves what is constitutional. In this country, the laws of checks and balances works like this. Legislatures pass laws, governors sign them, and when presented with a challenge, courts, not sheriffs, not county boards, not local politicians, determine whether those laws are constitutional. In Michigan, I don't think we have to worry about this. I think we have a legislature in London that seems to be wanting to loosen the laws rather than strengthen them. So I'm not sure why there's all of a sudden this panic. I believe in the Second Amendment. I am a gun owner. I have no fear that my gun is going to be taken away. But I do want to keep human, the guns out of the hands of those who should not have them. I would welcome common sense laws that protect citizens. And what you're saying is, if somebody passes those laws, that this county is not going to obey. I believe this rushed action is unwise. I urge you to table the resolution until you can hear from your constituents, other than the few that are, were able to come today. And I also fear that if passed, Lapeer County becomes a haven for those who may not want to obey the laws if they are ever passed. It is your mission to protect the citizens of Lapeer County. This resolution is not the way to do it. I urge all of you to not become chicken lips.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this board this morning during the first public time?
Good morning, my name is Sandy Shattuck, and I'm out of Lapeer Township. I am in support of the resolution. I am a gun owner, a responsible gun owner. I support the Second Amendment. The red flag laws are unconstitutional. The red flag laws are so ambiguous that anybody for any reason could indeed have their equipment taken away from them. Could be a neighborhood dispute, could be a family dispute, and that's wrong. The Constitution stated that there will be no infringement upon all living persons. That presupposes that the right already exists, which it does in the Declaration of Independence, with life, liberty, pursuit of happiness. Life not just being born, but protecting that life. Not only your own life, but the life of your family and your countrymen. I am fully in support of this resolution and I urge you to pass it. We can work as a community together with law enforcement. Gun owners are law-abiding citizens. The ones to worry about are the ones who are not. And by disarming law-abiding citizens, we open up the doors and work on them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is David House, I'm from Lapeer Township. First, I'd like to say I'm in support of the amendment, but the caveat is I haven't yet, to be honest. I think that this board probably supports the Constitution and, you know, when it comes down to it, whether you sign this resolution or not, at some point you're gonna probably decide not to agree with it, but hopefully that you will support the Constitution and this amendment. I have the parts of the whole thing. The second issue that I have, I'll just address with this one here and Jill Stock. The signage on this building says no weapons. And I see many weapons in this building when I came in here. I left both my firearms locked in the car, which I wasn't comfortable with, so I'm here unarmed, which I'm not comfortable with, because this building takes away my Second Amendment right to be in this building. And I can understand the security of it, but I had to go back in my car because there's nothing on the website, and there's nothing on the phone when you call on the answering machine that says what is a weapon? Is a firearm a weapon? Is crutches a weapon? I had to take my pocket knife, I had to go in the car, I had a magazine. There's nothing on this building, there's nothing on the website that defines what a weapon is. So I would like that to be addressed, and I support it because other people don't see anything for this other.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Who else would like to address this board this morning during the first public time?
Good morning, my name is Thomas Hill Morley, I live in Menmore. It seems funny that our forefathers fought life for our Constitution, and it seems we still are. If we don't support our Constitution, we have nothing. Seeing whatever we have, somebody wants to take it away. We're still fighting for it. So on behalf of all the people in Lapeer County, I believe we need this resolution to keep us free. We need to keep the good people safe and the bad people behind bars. So I am.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this board during the first public time?
My name is Nyra Bray, I'm in Lapeer Township, and I just want to say I do support this resolution. I know a lot of people in Washington have not really been honoring our constitutional rights. The Constitution, I think, is lost in translation, that our forefathers meant to protect our God-given rights, that those are innate rights given to us at birth. And people see it, some people see it as God's, or rights given to us by the government. But I appreciate that the county is standing up to protect our constitutional rights and I just want to say I support this because unless we, the people, stand up and say you're not gonna take our rights away, they're guaranteed by this Constitution, that, you know, lawmakers might trample on them and kind of teach the younger generations that those rights are given to us by the government rather than they're protected by the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this board this morning during the first public time?
Good morning, Harry Wilcox, lifelong resident of the county. Some of the people on this board know me, good, bad, or indifferent. Anyway, I am very much in support of this resolution. Our Constitution is very clear that our rights shall not be infringed. It doesn't identify any style of firearm or whatever. The other objection I've got overall in the public is our firearms are too often referred to as a weapon. In this room, there are many objects that can become weapons that are not called a weapon until they're turned on another human being in an assault of method. So why do my tools of a recreational sport, of target shooting, hunting, et cetera, have to be referred to as a weapon all the time? I encourage this board to definitely adopt this resolution and protect our rights given to us under the Constitution. Many people in this room have been sworn to defend our Constitution against enemies both foreign and domestic. I don't think I've given them up. I know Mr. Roy has served, and our officers have sworn to this as well. I don't think that I'm ready to give that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this board in this morning during the first public time?
Good morning, my name is Dean Craig. I live in Arthia Township. I've been a resident of Lapeer County for almost, actually just over thirty years. My ancestors founded this city. My ancestors helped build that court, that court building. The Constitution of the United States does not give us any rights. I'm sorry. You can't take away the natural-born right we all have to defend ourselves. The Constitution tells the government that it cannot infringe upon that right. And like many of the people that are here this morning have stated, infringement is infringement. The sign-out front is an infringement. The permitting process we're required to go through in this county to carry a firearm on our bodies to protect ourselves is an unconstitutional infringement. I don't care what the Supreme Court has ruled about whether a gun is a constitutional infringement if it's taken away or not. The Constitution says no infringement. This amendment, or this resolution that you're considering this morning states that, that you will not allow an infringement to be added, or you will not allow or condone our law enforcement from spending any time or energy enforcing unconstitutional infringements. I'm, I feel that the citizens of this county partner with law enforcement to help keep this county safe. Lapeer County is one of the safest counties in southeast Michigan. And I don't know if you know this, but out of all the counties in the lower three quarters of Michigan, we have more CPL holders in this county than any county until you get to the very tip of the mid, where the population in the county is less than five thousand deep. We have over thirteen percent of legal, law-abiding, responsible gun owners in this county that have their CPL. It's one of the reasons this county is so safe, because criminals don't want to come here. Criminals don't come here to try to avoid getting caught. Criminals don't follow the law. My favorite sign at the rally in Virginia Monday was criminals follow the law like elected officials follow the Constitution. That's what he said. The Constitution was put in place after, I'm sorry, the amendment we're talking about was put in place after the Constitution was written, because our forefathers thought they better clarify what they actually meant by life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It was not put in place to give the government any power. It was put in place to take away their authority. And I one-hundred percent support this resolution because we have a governor today who has sent a letter to the federal government requesting red flag laws to be passed at the federal level, which would be unconstitutional. That's not a federal authority that they have. The Tenth Amendment doesn't allow them to do that kind of thing. The Tenth Amendment doesn't allow them to regulate guns in any fashion. That's a state right. But we also have a governor that's making, that has multiple bills proposed right now that would eliminate AR-15s, that would restrict us on about how we can carry, where we can carry even more than we already have. The reason we have gun-free zones today, including this court building, is because Democrats were needed to get the law we have currently passed in order to get CPL holders to be able to have shell issue in this state, which before 2000 we didn't have. So there was some compromises made then, which, you know, I thought by now we would have been to court and had those thrown out, but it hasn't happened. So that's twenty years now I've been waiting for an unconstitutional law in Michigan to get thrown out. You know why it hasn't happened yet? Because law-abiding, responsible gun owners are waiting to make sure that happens through the process. This just states that you guys are unwilling to accept these laws that are being proposed. Multiple laws are on, are on the table right now in Lansing. And if any of those laws get through, and we're not, we're only a few people away from being Virginia right now. We have the State House and the State Senate, but we don't have the governor. And all it takes is a couple more people and a couple more counties getting lazy and not showing up to vote like they did in Virginia, and they'll be in the same place there. So I one-hundred percent support the resolution. Thank you. I don't have.
Who else would like to address this board this morning? Somebody else can address this during the first public time before I vote. During the same, no one else, I close the first public time, then bring this down to the action. The whole resolution to clear Lapeer County a sanctuary amendment, Harry Akers, come up and do that.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. My name is Harry Akers. I live at 2805 Oakview Drive in Attica Township. I've been asked why I presented this resolution to make our county a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. The reason is simple. Some politicians are now openly talking about taking away our rights. So the time is now. They are speaking up loud and clear that they want to take away our guns. We must be more loud and clear. This resolution will let our entire local, state, and federal legislators know that we will not accept any infringements on our rights, and we will not recognize any unconstitutional laws they may create. If we do it now, and they listen to the voting public, we can avert many problems that their unjust and illegal laws will create. I say "we" because I know that you, our county commissioners, are our neighbors, friends, fellow citizens, and patriots. With this resolution, we are doing this together. In the past, when some of the local, state, and federal politicians were running for office, we asked them how they felt about our Second Amendment rights. They wouldn't really answer our questions directly. They would say, "We're not talking about taking away your guns," and some of us believed them. When we pushed them for a direct answer, they would deflect and call us right-wing extremists and gun nuts. While they aren't deflecting anymore, they are now blatantly admitting and even signing documents that prove they want to take our guns away. Our governor, Gretchen Whitmer, even signed a letter stating that she wants universal background checks, she wants to outlaw what she calls assault weapons, ban what she calls high-capacity magazines, have stricter reporting requirements on all gun purchases, and even red flag laws that violate many more of our God-given rights. And some of our state house and, House representative and State Senate are right there with her. Last year, they submitted twelve House bills and sixteen Senate bills that tried to whittle away our constitutionally affirmed rights. We need this resolution now, and we need it to be as written. It is a simple, strong document written in plain language that everyone understands. This is a movement that is spreading across our state and our nation. If it is picked apart and changed, it will send the message that the counties aren't really in agreement, and it will cause many to wonder why the changes were even made. It says what your constituents wanted to say. Please don't change it. Thank you for allowing me to speak and for listening to me.
The last five minutes for questions, if anybody wants to ask, Eric.
Can I just make one statement? I know I spoke on this issue. Can I make one brief statement?
I allow you to do that, I suppose, a lot of the way else.
Is it, well, is there gonna be another public forum for any comments?
That's gonna be another public hearing at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll wait.
We kind of wanted everybody to hear what's going on here, what's going on with the resolution, understand it, and at the end of the meeting, we'll have another public hearing.
Oh, I'll wait.
Okay. Take the motion, close, close this one out right now. So we've got an agenda here. Point a bit to it. So the grounds, Community Corrections Department requests a contraction of alcohol, binding assistance, and heat for chronic function services. Request established fees for new equipment. Any corrections?
So we're gonna, consider the resolution later. Well, the process to work in, the resolution, written, will be moved up here to full board next week. We will.
Can we discuss it? We're gonna move it, move the topic. Move the topic, the whole thing, the next week. It's actually set up, we voted on next week, that's full board. So if we have any questions or suggestions or changes, those would be answered. Well, dial. Under your direction, Commissioner Kents. Well, the process to work in, the resolution, written, will be moved up here to full board next week. We won't.
Can we discuss it?
No, we're going to move it on next week.
Move the topic.
Move the topic, the whole thing, the next week. It's actually set up to be voted on next week at full board.
So if we have any questions or suggestions or changes, those will be mentioned.
Well, dial. Under your direction, Commissioner Kemp. You told us, told me, to set up an ad hoc committee. We were going to make change to this. You told me on the ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee worked to make the changes. The ad hoc committee met on Mondays, because we had a very short window between last Thursday and this Thursday. So we met, we discussed it, we agreed to send it as written. You said that, you actually directed me to set up that committee. Brendan and I, Rick were on there. We went through all sorts of different avenues. Bring it back to you, our suggestion would be to move it.
So you need a motion. We had a Second Amendment discussion.
On the ad hoc committee?
On moving the, the resolution.
Will you object to it? Object to it? You can voice your objection.
Before we have, we do any motions, we want that. Now we won't.
But Lenny wasn't here, so Lenny has, he has a right to speak on this, because of the COVID, the knee replacement, everything. So he wasn't afforded the opportunity to speak on this. But everybody else since last Thursday has had the ability to speak to anybody on the ad hoc committee. The problem was, last weekend, we failed an ad hoc committee. All the commissioners were gone. So basically, Brendan and I, Rick. Are you here? Are you here, Tommy, or are you going with the others? But I can only have three. The ad hoc is only three commissioners, and we have an ad hoc. Not four. You have, you have Kirk there and everybody else. Commissioners want to speak on this before we move it, we send it out to full board. You voted on it? Have you, have you sat there? So right now, we should, we should actually have a discussion.
Yes, sir. I have this question. I'm going to do that now versus going into other jurisdictions.
So can I just make a motion to move the resolution to the full board next week? I'll make that motion right.
It's more important. All right. Bezret.
Bezret, yep.
Discussion.
Yeah, I guess. A couple, a couple of questions. Fortunately, some of the speakers addressed the word "sanctuary," but I can't help but say that that word "sanctuary" bothers me because of its misuse in dealing with immigration. And I'm not sure why we want to use a term that is going to create issues. I certainly, I certainly support reaffirming the importance of the Second Amendment, but I don't know why we have to use "sanctuary" to, to cause more uproar about, about the topic.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, we have, when it comes to sanctuaries, this is what's been proposed, and this is what's coming down to, is to make conversation among the different counties. All say the same. And I think if you read it there, what Harry presented, by making changes, everybody, everybody starts making changes within the counties to what they want to send down, you just...
Well, I, I think resolutions are, are more powerful when they're tailored to, by individual bodies that show thought and consideration for different issues.
But not just because you don't like the word.
Well, the word sanctuary, some words are more problematic than others.
Okay, but I want to comment on the sanctuary, because I've heard this out down in Florida, this is Florida, this is not just Michigan, this is all over.
Right.
But the word sanctuary is a safety. We have sanctuary down there, we had sanctuary for a while. Sanctuary is all over the, the, the media, that's what's creating sanctuary, it's a bad thing because of the illegals. That's, we're not talking about protected illegals, we're talking about the sanctuary, safe haven for our constitutional rights. Sanctuary is a safe haven. It has nothing to do with illegals, it has nothing to do with anything else, it's just about protection. And we're saying that we're going to avoid some things about our constitution. Sanctuary shouldn't even be a word that's discussed as a bad thing, but it's not. It's a good thing, it's a safe haven. And that's all we're saying, ladies and gentlemen. And I agree with the party that brought the resolution school is.
Maybe we should put a definition in then of what we mean by safe haven, because a lot of people.
What is, what is a sanctuary?
I, I would use the word, for example, protected. Second Amendment protected, Kim, or something that doesn't carry all that baggage in sanctuary now appears to carry.
Brendan moved it and said, it's all we got to do is vote if we're going to send it out. Lenny, you have a speech, if you want to. You have an objective.
Well, and I appreciate that, it's a normal process for me. This is called a committee as a whole, which means things that are, the work that is done in committee then comes to this body, and now the whole body acts as a committee, and it works through wording, and then it finally goes to like next week's full board, where we actually can vote. So this is the appropriate time to have discussion. And full disclaimer, I shouldn't be here today because I had a knee replacement surgery, but I felt obligated as an elected representative to be here, because I want to have that discussion now, not waiting until next week's full board, when all of a sudden we're ready to vote on something, and that would be the first time, and all of a sudden, you might have discussion that would cause it to be delayed further. So, because this is my opportunity to have some discussion. And also, full disclaimer, I am a full supporter of the Second Amendment, and I take no exception to any of the comments regarding protection provided under these rights to bear arms under the Second Amendment. I'm also a strong constitutionalist, and I have a huge respect for our forefathers and what they crafted before us. Some of the comments that I heard today kind of give me a little bit of concern, because they were the same comments that I was reading at home recovering over the past week, and also a huge advocate of transparency. And I want us to be able to have this discussion as a body of people. And it's also what our Constitution wants. And everybody up here, all of our constitutional elected officers, as well as ourselves, all take an oath to support the Constitution of the United States of this great state. And I know how seriously myself and all my peers take that oath. My particular case, I have over 40 years of public service, going back to law enforcement career, and how 18 years of legislative representative experience. And I take, every time I take that oath, I take that oath extremely seriously. Good people, good patriots will still have things that they will disagree on. Picture our forefathers and the crafting of that beautiful document. I'm sure we're not homogeneous group, and everybody got it in their head, and there was a lot of, there's a lot of disagreement about that, and a lot of concerns, and some people are looking forward, and it amazes me, some of the forethought that they have looking forward, that here we find ourselves a couple hundred years later, and that document is still so point on today. Having said that, I share Commissioner Kemp's concern over the term "sanctuary." And I've also heard it said that, well, this resolution is just a worthless document. We take our jobs seriously here, and nothing that we do we consider to be worthless. Whatever we pass is going to have our signatures on it, and it is a symbol of what we stand for. So I know we all stand for, this board, we're blessed, is a, a board of conservative, thinking Republicans who support the Second Amendment. But again, standing for the Constitution, I think back to our forefathers and their concerns over the executive branch, we talked about the governor right now, or the legislative branch, we talked about the legislature or Congress at the federal level, and whether or not they're going to do any things that are going to abridge our constitutional rights. Our forefathers thought of that. Created three separate but equal branches of government to be checks and balances. And we might not like the delay of bureaucracy, but again, that is, if we're going to sit here and call ourselves constitutionalists, that is part of our Constitution, is that if our legislative branch enacts laws that conflict with our Constitution, it's that third equal branch of government, the courts, to set that right. Not necessarily for lawlessness to occur. And without a definition of sanctuary, that's where my concern lies, on the lawlessness part. The sanctuary can mean, as I've heard my counterpart, the anti, an animal sanctuary. It's a safe haven. Sanctuary can also mean, depending on its uses throughout the globe and throughout history, a safe haven from the governmental laws, or persecution, or whatever you call it. Come to this geography, come to this jurisdiction, and you will be safe, we will protect you from the laws, we will, we will, we will oppose the laws. And I don't see anywhere in our great document of the Constitution where that's where our forefathers gave us as an option. I'm sure they had these same very lively discussions that we're having right now, and there was probably some thought back then that legislature is going to create laws that are going to weaken what we're doing here. And they could have enacted, and they could have put into that the whole definition of sanctuary. Instead, they created that third and equal branch. And so, for me, when I read the resolution, the segue from laying all of the foundation, which is very appropriate foundation, that gives us our rights to bear arms. I too am a gun owner, I too am a, a, a proud defender of that law. All of those, the majority of that resolution defends what we have. But then, it immediately goes to a, and therefore, we declare ourselves to be a sanctuary. It was a kind of an awkward transition, the way it was written, without defining what sanctuary would be. I would be fine if the resolution said, and therefore, we don't use the term sanctuary, because it's got ambiguous meanings to say, and therefore, LaPierre County will vigorously defend our citizens' rights granted by the Constitution to bear arms, and we will exercise all legal authority to be able to, to do so. I'd be fine with that. But conversely, I would be fine with saying that we declare ourselves to be a sanctuary county if there's a sentence in there that defines what sanctuary means. Is it that safe haven, like the animals, or is it a sense of lawlessness that I don't believe our forefathers intended? So I don't see this as a worthless act, uh, this resolution, I see this as an important symbolic gesture, and because we are one of the very first counties in LaPierre County that's doing this, I would much rather not just rush this process through, I might much rather make sure we get it right, and our signatures are on something that represent how we feel, than six months from now, go, yeah, I wish we would have thought about that, I wish we would have included this, I wish we would have excluded that. So this is the appropriate time to have that, that discussion. If we, if we move it next week as written, I for one am just saying, as a, as a strong Second Amendment supporter, I may or may not be able to support that resolution on a yes-no vote.
It's not that big of a mistake.
I'm saying I might not be able to support that without, without that issue of sanctuary being addressed.
Brendan?
I just wanted to address, uh, three quick things. First and foremost, I wanted to make clear, because it was wrong in public comment, and I have heard it from constituents, this resolution will not bring about any policy changes to the county, not policy-driven. The way I've explained this to people is, this board passed a CARO resolution, I'm sure many of you remember that, to support the CARO Center. This is similar in the fact that we are supporting the Michigan Constitution, which in here, in the resolution, states very clearly, and I don't know if you guys have read the Michigan Constitution, but it states very clearly in the Michigan Constitution, every person has the right to keep and bear arms for the defense of himself and the state, which I personally think that is way clearer than the US Constitution is, so I like that we have that in there. So we are just reaffirming our support for the Michigan Constitution, for the US Constitution, for the Supreme Court cases that reaffirmed our rights, that's what this is. This is not a change of policy, nor can it be enforced as a change of policy, because we in the county don't have that right. And the reason, and to make that clear, some states are different with the way counties and cities are. Virginia's a great example. Virginia, the way they have their county system set up, it's kind of like a United Counties to form the state, kind of like the United States form the federal, federal government. Michigan, we as a county are just an extending arm of the state, which is a little different. So we actually can enforce policies the same way that Virginia counties, or Montana counties, or a lot of those western counties do. So we couldn't even enforce something like this, even if we wanted to, we're just an extension. But this isn't even enforceable, this just reaffirms the fact that we support the Second Amendment, we support everyone's rights to bear and present arms to protect themselves and for the defense of their county. Furthermore, because I heard this too, this will not cost the county a dime. I want to make that clear. Enforcement of this, which there is none, will not cost county anything. So by passing this, will not cost the county anything, because I heard this quite a bit, it frustrated me, and they said, why are we wasting our money? I thought, we're not wasting any money on this resolution. This is just a reaffirming fact. Uh, and, and we're also not nullifying any federal laws, nullifying any state laws, we don't have the power to do that. So I wanted to make that clear, first and foremost. The last thing I wanted to address is the issue that Mr. Schneider has brung up. I originally, the very first day back from, uh, what was the very first day back, from New Year's, actually came here and said, you know, I heard about this whole sanctuary city, uh, excuse me, there's an issue. I heard, I heard about this whole sanctuary county issue becoming a big situation down in Virginia, and I'm not really a big fan of that. That's why I originally said. The reason I said that is I read the original resolutions of some of them that were coming out there, and they were stating things that we in Michigan don't have the rights to state as a county. And it also went further, way beyond their rights as a county or any local government to do, to nullify federal law. And I'm not going to go into the whole history of nullification, but if anyone wants to know, I'll ask, I'll, you know, I'll talk to them afterwards about that exact history. So originally, I wasn't supportive of it, and I liked the word "sanctuary," because much like Mr. Schneider, I thought, oh, you know, that has a ridiculous connotation that, you know, places like Lansing and Kalamazoo are a sanctuary for illegal immigrants to escape the Constitution. But then I thought about it, I thought, people who show up to these meetings, people who are on the Facebook page, which I'm sure many of you are, which it's what, 100,000 people now, they don't care if it's called a sanctuary county or a Second Amendment Protection County, they care that a county is going to stand up and say, we here support the Second Amendment and the Michigan Constitution and the rights to do these things. So, so while we up here have an issue with that, and I think many out there would acknowledge it's a valid reason to have kind of a block in your head, I think we can get past this because it's, it's all just, it's all words in the big scheme of things. So one of the things that I was doing while Mr. Schneider was, was talking, is I, I looked up, because the great thing about modern day, we have modern technology, the definition of sanctuary, and I put together a little thing that we might want to add or consider adding, and says, whereas a sanctuary county is to be defined as a place of refuge for lawful gun owners and citizens under the Second Amendment and the Michigan Constitution. Then define sanctuary county, so we're not in that ambiguous spot that some places, some cities have, and it defines it for us, and it makes it clear to them that it's not going it's not gonna change anything that's set up. So, I was curious, would that wording fit and be acceptable to your concerns? Mr. Snyder?
If you'll say, if you'll say it again, start the [inaudible].
Whereas, a sanctuary county is to be defined as a place of refuge for lawful gun owners and citizens under the Second Amendment and Michigan Constitution.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it's important, if you use a term, six months from now or six years from now, we don't have a crystal ball, and I probably don't have the foresight that our forefathers did, um, we don't have a crystal ball to know what sanctuary might be, you know, that could be the flavor of the next decade. And within six years from now, it might have evolved to something just so totally ludicrous, we would have never expected it in 2020, that needs this in 2026, but there we are on the record as saying we were so. Just to have some type of definition, and the fact that you use the word raffle is, is, is what makes me more, more satisfied.
And, and, and I, I, I think we shouldn't have talked about this before, because this is like, I was a mile of United Nations, so we had to write resolutions all the time for it. And Resolution 101 is define your terms, so this defines the term in the terms, so everyone can be happy. So I hope that that satisfies the contingent, uh, that, that might be opposed, so. And I, I think it also addresses some of the issues that Mr. Kemp brought up at a previous point.
If you are willing to make a motion to...
He's got a motion, I'm...
Yeah, I already have a motion, but I would ask, I would, it's in mine, so we can move that action forward, and also, if I could add, we can make that vote today, since we're all agreed to that. I mean, we're just one person, I could change that vote next week. We have people that came, took time out of their life, that are concerned, why do we want to delay that process one more time? I, we've talked, we've had to add, not add, I, you're in agreement with that?
Probably the reason, probably that, is we have one commission.
Yes.
We all gonna be here next week?
Oh, we're gonna have one missing next week. And right now, if the vote is poured, whether we have one missing today or one next week, it's still gonna be saying that odds will go...
So we, and we have done it historically both ways. We moved and issued to the full board, and then we've actually voted on something, even though we voted on something, it can't be finalized until we vote on it the following week, but it does at least set on the record what the feelings were at that time, so, we've done it both ways, and I think, well, if I'm gonna start with you making a motion...
Well, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion to bring it as presented. I would make a motion to amend the resolution with my wording, I'll provide to the clerk following the meeting. And I will add that to, um, you could asterisk, and, and put it as...
It actually flows best, it, it actually flows best right after the end of page one, and right before you declare yourself.
So that would be, uh, probably we need to vote for five or six sentences.
Make the first paragraph.
So I, I would, I would make the amendment to add that, uh, to, following the eighth paragraph, so it'll be before the ninth, following the eighth, following the therefore be it resolved, so that before the resolve, uh...
Before the...
Yeah.
I hope there's...
Yeah, so before the, the resolved portion of the resolution, I'll add my wording.
Dial had also expressed some concern about whether it was your concern.
I think so. In a bruiser, I, I want to think about it a little bit more, but at least, I can live with that at this point. I did want to ask, in the further result, some sections, normally, we send things to MAC for dissemination of the counts, uh, should we add that?
I think Michigan Association of Counties would probably benefit from getting it, if we're one of the first.
Brett, do you have any issue adding that to my amendment?
No.
The other is, Michigan, says Michigan U.S. Congressman, I, is that the blue senator?
I would assume so, because they're all full in Congress, and it's like, yeah. So my resol, so be my wording, plus...
I would say that more than what you have already, and tell you through the [inaudible].
Plus adding to MAC, so, there we go.
Now we got motion support, now we can...
Did you draw the first motion? We were through that, correct?
Yeah, we were.
Then I approved the second. Well, we got a second public time, so that, I believe everyone here can weigh in on what just went in front of the [inaudible]. We have a motion and support, move this to the meeting with changes that Brendan recommended to put in. I'll favor that, same time, say aye.
Aye.
So this is, we'll go to next week to the full board. We're still gonna vote on it.
I also think...
But we're not, Lenny, you got a vote?
I'm just gonna thank everybody, just in case some have to leave to get out of there more, and we love them, and we see our citizens come out in a couple days, I'm sure, it's good for everybody, we appreciate, uh, demeanor and behavior and the thoughtfulness that everybody put to their counties, thank you.
Finish it. We got a motion and support, we will move this out.
Mr. Kirk, let me take it, and this is sort of point of order, I'm not sure that we've got two minutes, the last, the last minutes. January...